Good morning, good evening everyone. Welcome back to our daily wisdom from Bhagavad Gita session. We had a bit of a break. An additional day break this time around because we had Diwali. So, hope you all had a great Diwali. And enjoyed. Celebrating it, cleaning home, having sweets and all the fun stuff, fun and frolic that comes along with it. So, everyone welcome to all of you. We will get started. Today, we will continue on our Guru series and we will do a Diwali special session on Guru itself, right? How we can map both? So, let me share my screen and we will get started with our opening prayers. Give me a sec. Are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
Great. So, let's get started with our opening prayers like always do. Guru Brahma, Guru Vishnu, Guru Deva Maheshwarha. Guru Sakshat Par Brahman. Tasmay Sri Guruvé Namah. Vasudevasutam Devam. Kamsa Chaunur Madanam. Devaki Paramanandam. Krishnam Van Te Jagat Gurum. Krishnam Van Te Jagat Gurum. So, good morning, good evening once again to all of you. So, let's get started with today's session. Just give me a sec. So, we are on Shloka four dot three four is what we are discussing. And that is what we are going to continue. I have included one more Shloka for our discussion today. The topic that we are going to discuss, it will help that write the discussion forward on that topic as well. So, I'm very excited. You're welcome to follow along. Tad Vidhi Pranipatena. Pariprashnena Sevaya. Updikshantite Jyanam. Jyani Nasstadv Darshenaha. We have a lot of hands. So, yes, Sunday, please go ahead. You are the first one. Go ahead.
Okay. Tad Vidhi Pranipatena. Pariprashnena Sevaya. Updikshantite Jyanam. Jyani Nasstadv Darshenaha.
Thank you. Very nice.
Raavulji, Radhe Radhe, please go ahead.
Radhe Radhe. Tad Vidhi Pranipatena. Pariprashnena Sevaya. Updikshantite Jyanam. Jyani Nasstadv Darshenaha. Radhe Radhe. Nice sir. Thank you. Radhe Radhe. Yes, Praghi ji, please go ahead.
Yes, Radhe Radhe Praghi ji.
Yeah, Radhe Radhe. Thank you. Tad Vidhi Pranipatena. Pariprashnena Sevaya. Updikshantite Jyanam. Jyani Nasstadv Darshenaha. Radhe Radhe.
Parvani pu, Radhe Radhe.
Yes, Radhe Radhe Parvani ji.
Haa, Radhe Radhe. Tad Vidhi Pranipatena. Pariprashnaya Sevaya. Updikshantite Jyanam. Jyani Nasstadv Darshenaha. Radhe Radhe.
Radhe Radhe. Thank you. I see one more hand. Yes, Sapana ji, please go ahead.
Radhe Radhe Panna ji.
Radhe Radhe. Tad Vidhi Pranipatena. Pariprashnena Sevaya. Updikshantite Jyanam. Jyani Nasstadv Darshenaha. Thank you, Radhe Radhe.
You. Okay, so we have one more Shloka. So, this one we've been talking about. It says Lord Krishna is telling Arjun that learn the truth by approaching a spiritual master. And then he further goes on to add that inquire from him with reverence and render service unto him. Such an enlightened saint can impart knowledge unto you because he has seen the truth. So, let's move on. I have included one more verse today. And we will see why I have included it. It's fifteen dot seven, chapter fifteen, seventh verse. Mamay Vansho Jeeva Loke. Jeeva Bhuta Sanatanaha. Manashashthani Indriyani. Prakritishtani Karshati. Okay, I can take a couple of hands.
Radhe Radhe Dineshji, please go.
Radhe Radhe. Mamay Vansho Jeeva Loke. Jeeva Bhuta Sanatanaha. Manashashthani Indriyani. Prakritishtani Karshati. Radhe Radhe.
Yes, Radhe Radhe. Okay, I see three more hands on there. Go ahead.
Mamay Vansho Jeeva Loke. Jeeva Bhuta Sanatanaha. Manashashthani Indriyani. Prakritishtani Karshati.
Nice. Thank you. Yes, Uday ji.
Radhe Radhe Uday ji. I am unable to unmute him. Okay, in the meanwhile, Praghi ji, Radhe Radhe.
Yeah, Radhe Radhe. Mamay Vansho Jeeva Loke. Jeeva Bhuta Sanatanaha. Manashashthani Indriyani. Prakritishtani Karshati.
Nice. Thank you, Uday ji. Even I'm not able to unmute. Maybe last one, Apana ji, feel big, then we'll get started.
Radhe Radhe Panna ji.
Radhe Radhe. Mamay Vansho Jeeva Loke. Jeeva Bhuta Sanatanaha. Manashashthani Indriyani. Prakritishtani Karshati. Thank you, Radhe Radhe.
You. Okay, so this Shloka. Lord is saying that embodied soul in this material world are my eternal fragmental parts. So, the first word that we are going to focus today is that the eternal fragmental parts. But bound by their material nature, they are struggling with the six senses, including the mind. We will not spend a lot of time on that aspect. So, let's get started. Like we always do, we'll start with the soul soup segment. Where we are doing the success, happiness and fulfillment series. So, as part of this, is your motivation dependent on what is happening around you? It's a very important question we need to think about. Is it a function of what's happening around you in life? What people are doing? Like, for example, your enthusiasm, the external rewards, do they hold the key for your enthusiasm is the question that needs to be asked. So, basically that means there are two kinds of motivations. Internal and or external. Which one is something that helps us and which one is where we don't hold the keys to the kingdom? Or the keys to our motivation. Okay, so that's something we need to read about now. People get motivated in contrasting ways. What are those contrasting ways? For example, the external reward is a fuel that enthuses them. For example, if their boss praises them, they become motivated. If their efforts are visible to society, they feel inspired, right? The corporate setup promotes that as well. Visibility, 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 perception management, all that stuff. But if you are drawing praise from people around you, if that inspires you, you'll ask what is the problem in that? There is no problem. The problem will happen because with that kind of mindset, if tomorrow your boss will criticize you, you will become discouraged. That means you have handed over that keys to their hand. And if your achievements are not highlighted in society, then they will feel dispirited. So, the external rewards, they hold the key for their enthusiasm. In contrast, there are people who are internally motivated. They create inspiring thoughts, beliefs and goals within themselves. And they possess that ability to tap into an inner source of passion which propels them to excellence and achieve success. That's typically how sportsmen are. Right? They just fuel themselves with so much of inspiration that all the hard yards that are needed for them to succeed. They do that relentlessly even though it may sound boring or monotonous. Okay, so that is the key. And they, these people, they are not, they become insulated to external fluctuating situations. Situations do change around us. They keep on fluctuating. So, they have insulated their motivation from their external circumstances. And Swami ji, in fact, he tells about this story. Okay, it's a beautiful example that he gives himself that he, he did his Vedic study under Kripaluji Maharaj, Jagat Kuru Shikapaluji Maharaj. And he wanted to spread this message for the welfare to the rest of the world as well. So, as a service of, to him, he deep dived into the scriptural study of the, you know, all the scriptures, open issues and Puranas. And then he, when he was supposed to deliver lectures, you know, he thought it will be advantageous to practice public speaking as well because now he has to address so many people around. And the only hitch was that there were not many people there in that ashram. So, now, he said Maharaj, he went to the spiritual master and said it will be beneficial that if you can arrange some people who can sit so that I can deliver a lecture. Right? And then Maharaj told him something very interesting. He said that, you know, that it, he, he said that he took that opportunity, a good guru, he's always never misses out on an opportunity to coach the student. So, what he told him was that my child, the lack of inspiration that you feel just because you don't have people around it or the carelessness does not come from the outside, it originates from within and can be eradicated from within as well. And then he started practicing, you know, delivering speech to walls. He started delivering speeches to walls. And then when he would go out to for a walk, he started delivering speech to the fields and pretty much everything around. As if there are thousands of people who are listening to his discourses. So, that was invaluable lesson he learned from his guru. And to this day, you know, he holds that because whether he has five people, ten people or fifty people, his enthusiasm is the same regardless. So, that is the resource that we need to tap into. I hope that provides some food for thought around this, that internal motivation is something that we need to tap into because if we are motivated by our external circumstances, then it's, it's a game that is very, it's fraught with danger because then people hold the keys to your motivation and they can make you dispirited very quickly, demotivated very quickly if they don't. You know, praise you or if they don't do things that you, you know, expect out of them. So, with that said, we then, we will continue to build on this. How do we internally inspire ourselves, right? We will continue on this topic. But this is a very critical formula for us to stay inspired in life and of course achieve success, happiness and fulfillment. Now, let's get to Bhagavad Gita after this segment. So, today we are going to talk about the Diwali special session on Guru is what we are doing. But before that, let's talk a little bit about the Govardhan Leela. Today is Govardhan Puja. So, happy Govardhan Puja to all of you. Today was the day when Lord Krishna, he lifted Govardhan Hill. As the story goes, if you have heard about it, you know, with his little finger. And the beauty of this lela was because it was done in Braj. He would hide his, you know, the magnificent form or the shure shakti. And his friends thought, you know, they were the ones who were holding on to this mountain with their sticks and twigs and all the effort that they are doing. He gave them that feeling. It's because of their effort, this humongous task of lifting a hill is getting accomplished. And they were thinking, you know, they were thinking that this guy, when we go out to the fields to graze cows, he just sleeps and enjoys time while we graze his cows. And does he think we are the servant of his father now such a big, you know, this kind of a calamity has befallen upon our village and even now he's not doing anything. How lazy is he? He's not even making an attempt to show that he's trying to do something. Okay? That is a feeling his friends were having, not knowing that it was his little finger that was doing the trick. So, anyways, Govardhan lela, it's a beautiful lela where Lord Krishna had said that have an anyata, you know, worship God only. Because Govardhan was Vishnu had taken on a form of Govardhan. In fact, they said during Krishna lela in Barasana Hill, I think Brahma ji had become a mountain and then in Nandgao, Lord Shiv saw the entire trinity had descended. Then the master of the universe had taken on an avatar. So, he said that we should worship Govardhan Ufijjar ka or rather than going to these Chota Mota Devi Devtas, right? Like Indra, they used to worship Indra, the god of rain. And it was not taken well, received well by Indra because he also suffers from anger, greed and all that stuff like PR. So, then he, he instructed his, one of his ministers to go and start, you know, putting tornadoes and torrential rains, heavy rain and all that stuff. But then Krishna, he just protected them by lifting Govardhan here. In fact, this lela unfolded for seventies. And Lord Krishna, sorry about that. He used to have Ashteyami meals, eight times meal, small, small meals. I don't know whether he had ready Tridjuta Divakar or what, but he used to have small eight meals. It's good for our stomach actually if you have it in little proportions, more frequently, good for metabolism as well. I mean, so, and when he came back, his mother said, okay, he has missed eight meals a day and for seven days, so twenty-five-six meals we are going to prepare for him. So, that is where the concept of Chappan Bhog came. There are so many places now, the shops, they talk about Chappan Bhog, but this is where this term came from. So, anyways, happy Govardhan Puja to all of you and Govardhan was none other than Vishnu himself because who had descended to participate or sweeten gods' lelas, right? So, that is why, that is what happens in divine lelas. Now, let's get back to Bhagavad Gita. So, today we will have a lot of philosophical discussion and I want you to have your thinking philosophers hats on because they are going to think about certain things and then come to some kind of inferences and conclusions around it as well. So, let's get started. Darkness. You see darkness? Anybody likes darkness yet? So, darkness is a symbol of ignorance. Scripturally speaking, darkness is ignorance. So, when you go around in the dark and there is a rope that falls on your feet, what will happen? You may think of it as a snake. You may get freaked out. Right? People can imagine ghosts also in dark. So, darkness is, is basically considered as, you know, tamasic ignorance. All that stuff is associated or synonymous with darkness. And there's an eternal battle going on between darkness and there's another thing called light. Light is knowledge. Light is magnificent. You can see things as they are, right? The same thing that you thought was probably a snake. Even though it was an occlusive rope only, nothing to do with. Now, between the battle between light and dark, who wins? Basically, it's, it's an ongoing thing. But if you think about it, based on the rotation of the earth, we get experience, get to experience light and darkness. Now, the interesting thing about both light and darkness is it is asymmetric, you know, when it comes to one overpowering the other. Now, let's look at it. Let's try to understand this. Stop me where you think it's getting a little overboard and I'm, I'm becoming more than a Bhagavad Gita narrator, a poet, okay? So, just hold me back. But let's talk about it. Can light enter darkness? Light can enter darkness. As you can see, this light is peeping through the darkness. And when you have sufficient light, the darkness will go away. Now, can the converse happen? Can darkness enter light? Darkness cannot enter light. The converse cannot happen. Now, this is where we need to, so just hold on to that thought. Light can enter darkness, but darkness cannot enter light. Okay? Now, the second Shloka that we did was, now God is, one sun can erase, so let me get back to the game, maybe later, next one. So, hold, hope until this point, it's kind of making sense. Good. Now, let's move. Now, you have, you are in a stark night, like Diwali is typically happens in an Amavasya night, nothing, right? And we light everything. Now, let's say there's a starlit light. Is it enough to take away the darkness of the night? It's not right. It's not. How about moon, moonlit night? Is it sufficient to take the darkness away? We know that through our experience, it's not. The darkness will completely go away when the sun will come. And countless stars and or moon is not substitute for a sun. So, if you think about it, when whether it is, whether it is star or whether it is moon, it does not have the ability to take away the complete darkness. It's only the sun which can take away the complete darkness, right? Where am I leading? I myself don't know where I am leading this discussion now, okay? Again, going back to the same thing, just for a quick difference. Darkness is associated with ignorance and light is associated with knowledge. Darkness can be overcome by light. Light can enter darkness, but the converse is not true. Darkness cannot enter light. Okay, now, we spoke about countless stars. They don't have the ability to take away the darkness of the night and moon can also not do that. It's only when the sun dawns or the sun comes, the darkness goes away. Now, God, it's like one sun we are talking about. He is like a million suns put together. That much resplendent. In fact, our scriptures say the aura of his body, the effulgence of his body, it's like millions and billions of sun, that much light he has. So, the second Shloka that we did today. Mamay Vansho Jeeva Loke, Jeeva Bhuta Sanatanah. That jivaatmas, we, we are eternal fragmental parts. If that is the case, we are also cut from the same cloth as God, which is divine. How come we have been engulfed by darkness? It's a very valid question. How come? And for how long we have been covered? The, were we covered with darkness? The answer is yes. Are we covered with darkness? The answer is yes. Will we always be covered with darkness? Answer is no. You can come out of darkness because light can enter darkness. Darkness cannot enter light. Light can enter darkness. We have spoken, right? With the previous slide I told you, the light can enter darkness. Now, is it a matter of getting surprised that we got engulfed with darkness? Actually, no. Why? Because if you look at it like a star, it has a light. We also have a light. We are fragmental part of God. But that light does not have an ability to resplend, be as resplendent as God is. So, if you have a small, let's say you have a torchlight. That God is sachchidanant, he has it in infinite quantity. And we have it in finite quantity. We are anusat, anuchit, anuanant. So, let's say there's a torchlight. The torchlight, you can cover it with a few layers, the light is gone. That means the darkness has come. The darkness has engulfed that. And having said that, because darkness, if you think about God's three energies, the Maya is there, his Yogumaya is there and Jeeva Shakti is there. The Jeeva Shakti being Anu has always been exposed to that darkness and got engulfed by it. It's only when we make room for the light to come that ignorance will be dispelled. I hope that's kind of making sense. I'll build on that a little more today. So, we, although we are resplendent, but we are not resplendent enough to overcome. We are not like that sun. When sun comes, the darkness goes away. We are probably like that star which is there, it has its own light but does not have the ability to dispel the darkness completely. So, we do have that ability but not. Now, to thicken the plot, there's another thing that happens. So, mamay vansho jeeva loka jeeva bhuta sanatanah. Manashashthani Indriyani Prakriti Stani. He says that because now our mind and intellect, we have another layer on top of it, okay? That is thickening the plot. Now, let's understand that a little more. So, this, you see the dark tunnels and you're seeing the light gradually coming out? This light is basically thrown into the darkness when we start tackling the basic questions. Who are we? Who is God? What is our relationship with God? What is the purpose of human life? How do we progress towards it? Who can show us this light from darkness? It's a guru. So, if you think about Diwali, it's a festival of light, prakash. It's like Andhkar se prakash ki aur tamasoma jyotir gamaya vise. And who will enable that journey for you? It's the guru who enables that journey for you. Okay, so if you truly understand it, God is the one who enables light for us. He is the torchbearer for us because if he doesn't tell you the fundamental question, right? For us, the life is all about. What is life basically? You know, you, like Swami Vivekanand, when he was coming to US for the first time, I believe there was a student who was traveling along with him in the ship those days. You know, they used to go and ship thirty, forty days voyage. So, I asked this guy, what are you, what are you going to US for? He said, I'm going to US to study, doing my undergraduate. He said, all right, then what will you do? He said, then I will come back to India and do ICS. Those days, they used to have ICS, like IS, we have these days, they used to have ICS. So, then he said, okay, what are you going to do with ICS then? He said, then I will find a good match. After I become an ICS officer, I'll find a good match. I'll get a good girl. He said, fine, then what will you do? He said, then I will marry her and then have kids. He said, all right, then what will you do? He said, then I will do social and economic progress. That means I will earn more and I'll do a lot of potlucks. I'll meet with people, do parties, right? And all that stuff, basically, social and economic progress is what we think, right? That is the time we have arrived in life and now we are going to enjoy everything. So, he said, that's what I'm going to do. He said, then what will happen? He said, then I will, you know, basically after that I will raise my kids nicely and send them to, you know, whatever happens and then sponsor their studies or whatever, as a parent you would do. And then, then he said, then what will happen? Then he said, what, I will have my retirement funds and then I'll retire. And then he said, what will happen? Then what will happen? He said, then, then what will happen? Then I'll die. So, then Swami Vivekanand said, is that all your plan of life is? So, this guy was zapped. He said, yeah, I mean, is that all? And then people will say, oh, you tell me anything better. That is all I am supposed to do in life, right? As a human, we just spend our life doing these basic activities, pay EMI's, pay your bills, raise a family, do all these things and then one day depart. So, if you fundamentally break down all these activities, we are, they are all centered around four activities, eating, sleeping, mating and defending, defending through our insurance policies and bank balances, right? And eating, sleeping, mating, even animals too. So, the point is when you are born as a human, these fundamental questions, answers to these questions, even the having that spark, okay, first of all, inquire who you are. Who is God? Is there a relationship you have with them and what is the purpose of this life? And then what do you need to do on a day to day? Only a guru can tell you. So, from this dark tunnel towards light, making room for that light to come because we are in darkness. Light can come through darkness, but we have to make way for it. We have to make space for it. And that process is enabled by a guru only. And that is on the occasion of Diwali because we celebrate, this is a festival of light. Let's understand guru is the one who actually takes us from darkness towards light. So, that is the mapping basically wanted to do in today's session because it's a Diwali's special session. So, the guru is the one who's taking us from darkness towards light. Now, let's move on. Now, the important thing is we have this faculty, right? Our brain, mind, Now the important thing is, we have this faculty, right? Our brain, mind and intellect. I won't say it, the brain is a hardware. Mind and intellect is the faculty that we have. And then we are talking about, we have to attain God, figure out God, who's God, and then attain God, fully one day. So if you think about it. This process. One thing is material and others divine. There is absolutely no link at all. How can you attach something material to divine? This has to be some kind of, there's, I think in chemistry, we had studied a process called soldering. Where you join two metallic objects with something which can conduct electricity, right? You melt two the, two things, two ends and then join them together through a solder. Which has properties to conduct electricity in the, within that wire. So this is kind of a soldering that needs to happen because there's no bridge. What is the commonality? You have something material here, our mind and faculties and the way with. And then you are talking about divine here. How do you establish that bridge? So from a connection standpoint, absolutely nothing. There's no perception, there's absolutely no connection, no basis, right? And this is where a guru comes in, okay? Guru will come in and he will tell you the technology, how to establish that connection. Okay, now the problem here is, if you see, we are like this wire. You see this wire? There's an electric wire and electric wire has a bit of an insulation around it. So now let's say this electric wire is carrying a current of about thousand volts or two thousand volts. But if it is having that insulation, you can hold it and you'll not feel anything at all. By the way, electricity is pretty powerful, right? In India, when they started doing electric trains, there was a guy who went up. To check out, I think there was some malfunction somewhere. He went with an umbrella. Umbrella, he picked up the umbrella, it was raining. And the umbrella, you know, the metal, that metal, it touched the electric wire. And that guy was never to be seen again, okay? Don't know what happened. Can imagine how powerful that current is, but if the insulation is there, you'll not feel that current. Now we are also like, if you look at the wire, we also have insulation and that insulation. Has to be removed before the contact can be established, because if you, you know, going back to the shloka again. Mamme Vanshu Jeevalokai, God is saying, you are my eternal fragmental part, we are also divine. But we have an insulation, the covering of our ignorance. And the intellect-mind intellect complex that we have to deal with. And this is where guru comes in and he peels that. And he reveals your true nature and you shine forth and that. Connect that was missing previously starts getting established. Who does that? Guru. Guru will help you discover your true nature. He will remove that insulation, that is the insulation of. Ignorance that we, the cover of ignorance that we are doing. And once that is established, the job is done. So I hope that's making sense. Otherwise, from material to divine, there's absolutely no, there's no basis and that is why we have no perception of God and. We have to simulate things in our mind and then we have to awaken our true nature. We have to do so many of intellectual gymnastics and. You know, take things on faith basically and on face value what guru is saying. But when we keep on subscribing to that knowledge, eventually the true nature of our soul will be awakened and guru will remove that insulation. Which will, you know, the, the wire will be, um. Will come into its true form in that case, okay? That is where guru is important. So guru does this, first of all, he gives this technology. Sort of with that, we can build that connect with divine. And secondly, he's the one who's actually showing us the light by. Helping us tackle the fundamental questions in life, the questions that we don't even think about. Never think about. It's like everybody's leading a life in a certain way and so we do we. And one day we casually depart from this world. In fact, when we depart from this world, it is said that. You know, you kind of get to see your slideshow of life and then your eyes and mouth is wide open. Oh my God. Was this his whole drama? That I participated in without even understanding and giving things so much importance to things that never really mattered. But by then it's too late and then we again start participating in this drama and this cycle continues. So that is how it goes. Okay, so this darkness light thing, hopefully it made sense today. It was a Diwali special session, so I thought let's do it with some light thing. Now what we need to do here is. Like. We are, this light, we are making space for light and then the light is coming and if you make enough space. The light will come and it will dispel the complete darkness. Once this. Darkness goes away, uh then there is no way. Uh, it can get back to darkness. That is what happens when your intellect gets illumined. Then the darkness cannot come back again at all. Like I said, once it is light, darkness cannot enter light. And that is how the process goes. You become illumined and you become like that sun where darkness has no. Uh, no space at all, okay? It can never overcome sun at all. Okay, now we can take any questions that you may have. On this topic that you spoke about and hope you are able to appreciate the role of a guru in this whole process because without guru. There's absolutely no technology anybody can give you how to establish correct with divine. Because we are only material faculties and apparatus to deal with. It's only through a guru, he would, he would be able to build that bridge or that connection that we need. And facilitate that process and take you out of that dark tunnel into light. With each passing day, with each passing week, month, year. If you, if you simply continue following the teachings of the guru, you will see your intellect will start shining forth, you know, that. That cloud of darkness will start moving away gradually. Yes, Sudhakarji, you have a question?
Radha Radha Sudhakarji, please go ahead.
Radha Radha, it was a nice explanation about this. I just want to. Uh, clarify my understanding based on the so far discussion about the light and the darkness. Can we consider the Maya as a darkness?
Yes, that's right. So Maya is the material energy of God. Right? Which is actually Maya, the meaning of Maya itself is, that is. Which is not. So. It has engulfed us actually, right? And that is where we are overcome by ignorance. And. It's only when we, and Maya being an energy of God, see, it's like this. If you conquer Maya on your own, it's like conquering God himself. Right? So this ignorance aspect has come because we are facing Maya right now. And I explained to you, it is, it is not something to be, get astonished about because. Um, we are being a fragmental part of God. If we were resplendent as God is like sun. The darkness could have never overcome us, but because we are Anu. The darkness has engulfed us. It's like, if you have a small firefly, right? And you cover it with a few things, the light will not come out. So that aspect is, so yes, in that sense Maya is, is actually ignorance that has engulfed us. Which has actually given us this perception that. Uh, you know what, which basically hides God from us. God has actually two veils. One is the Maya and one is the Yogumaya. So for us to conquer Maya, we again have to surrender to God because it's his energy. Defeating Maya or overcoming Maya on our sole effort is as good as defeating God, not possible. We have to become surrendered to God in order to overcome that this ignorance born out of Maya. That is how it's, but yeah, any other question, follow-up questions, Sudhakarji on this?
No, nothing actually, I'm just trying to clarify. But I had a small doubt on one topic on this one, like we heard from the lectures, right? Like, even the god-relayed souls, you know, when they. Like heavy planet, heavenly planets, they can fall down to the Maya, right? This is one statement we heard it. The other statement also we learned from the Bhagavad Gita is that. Once you reach me, there is no return back to this ma- material world. So these two statements, sometimes you know, it gives a confusion to me, how come, you know, those. This can, if you can clarify, because it's slightly related to those two topics of ignorance and also the darkness and the light.
Let me clarify. The gods that you're talking about are demigods. So if you're talking about celestial gods. They, that is also in material plane. That is not God's abode. God's abode. I think I showed you that chart, maybe you missed that session probably. We have seven. Layers of celestial abodes, you know, all the way up to. You have, you know, the Swarglok, Ajanaklok, Prithrilok. Um, Brhaspatilok, all the way up to Brahmalok, Satyalok. They are all higher abodes and people in those abodes, it's like a golden jail. Demigods are people like you and I. You can also become a demigod. Okay, I can also become, maybe we have become in one of our lifetimes. You can become Indra, I can become Indra. They are not gods. They are still playing the game in the material world only. They have gone to the luxury jails, the golden jails. But they have not gone beyond Maya as yet. Once you go to God's abode, which is, you know, the three-fourth of this creation. The, the material abodes are one-fourth of this creation, the spiritual abodes are three-fourth, which we have no experience of. Once you go there, you are not obliged to come back. You may choose to come back. Uh, to do a service for God or as a guru. Uh, as a representative of God, but you are not obliged to come back at that point. So I think you are probably confusing demigods with God. Demigods are not gods. They are ordinary souls like you and I. Uh, who have gotten a position because of their virtuous deed of course, but they are still in Maya. I hope you answered my question, Sudhakarji.
Thank you, thank you, thank you so much.
So Varundev, Agnidev, um, you know, Indra Dev, they are all in Maya. They are not god-realized, okay? These are Devi Devitas. Whose job is to take care of the material administration of this world, right? Rain grain cycle we spoke about in Bhagavad Gita. They make sure the rains and everything happens and. Everything is, uh, and then through rain come the grain and basically we are manifestation of that only, right? When we eat grain. So they take care of the administration of this universe and it is a post. It's like election. After four years, we have to vacate. And after their hundred years, they also have to vacate. Somebody else comes then. All the way up to Brahmaji. By the way, Brahmaji is also a jivaatma. And when God does not find a suitable jivaatma, then he himself becomes Brahma. Is what our scriptures say. So you can become Brahmaji as well. Okay, I will not tell you women, go to, go for that. It's better to go beyond the cycle of. Life and death than aspire to become Devi Devitas because they are also. In this material world only and on the other hand, they don't have that advantage. So when you become, go to celestial awards, it's a withdrawal only account. So just imagine a bank which has a finite amount of money because of your past virtuous deed and you can only withdraw, you cannot deposit anything. And the day the withdrawal is done, you are again back. But as humans, you can make deposits also. So the ability to do purusharth is given only to humans. Others are called bhogiyonis. Uh, including animals and, uh, you know, other species as well, yeah? Yes, Sunday, you wanted to add something?
Uh, there's a question from Falguniji. Uh, Nitinji, can you please elaborate a little bit more on that is which is not basically Maya?
Maya is basically, it gives you an illusion basically that there's going to be happiness. Come, come, I'll give you happiness. But then it gives you whack after a while. So, but we still keep going for that happiness. And that is why Maya is basically, it's teasing you. But at the same time, it's beating you up, whacking you as well, telling you this is not the right place. Go to my master. So it, it is unreal. It's like a Mrid Trishna, right? That deer. A deer is, in that physics thing is there, right? Mirage, concept of Mirage where it thinks there's water, there's water, but there's not. Our scriptures say. You can extract, um, you know, oil out of sand. But you cannot extract happiness out of the material world Maya. It is not capable of giving you real happiness at all. But it will give you that feeling, perception that you know, there is happiness. I'm not happy somebody else's. My life is not perfect, somebody else's. Or I know somebody who is happy. This is all a hallucination that Maya creates and we keep falling for it. In fact, when we go to. They say if you have to develop detachment, go to a hospital or a mortuary, right? Shamshankhat. Immediately you'd have a viragy. But Maya is so powerful. That after a few minutes or maybe a few days, again you are back. It's like, alright, everything is normal, everything is cool. So Maya is that veil which is, which basically gives, keeps on giving us this hallucination. Of this kind of a thing and we keep falling for it and we have to break that matrix basically. That is the whole idea. So it is unreal. It gives you a hallucination of happiness, but there is no happiness there. Maya does cannot make anybody happy. If you can find one person whom you think is happy, let us know it. They need to be rewarded with a gold medal. There's a first person on this universe who would have find happiness in the middle. It's not possible. Scriptures are telling us. You don't have to second guess yourself. Nobody is. Even Bill Gates probably pops in a pill before, you know, just to get good rest. So it's, it's just not possible in the material world, right? Then it will defeat the purpose and the Maya is. Is a servant of God. See, when somebody is your energy, energy has to serve you. So Maya is a perfect servant of God. Why? Because it is pushing us towards God by whacking you. And giving you disappointment from every relation, everything that you think, thought would give you happiness. And by giving you disappointments, it's actually turning you towards its master that this is not the right place. So two things happen. It's like when you're, let's say there's a fire. And your hand goes into the fire, two things happen. One is, it will burn. Which is not good. Second thing that happens is. That, uh, it will give you a sensation of pain. Which is good. Why? Because only because of that sensation, you will take your hand away, that okay, I need to take an evasive action. So Maya does the same. It whacks you and tells, keeps on reminding you, this is not the right place, this is not the right place, but you keep. Looking for happiness in the same place. That is our problem, not Maya's problem. So when Lord Ram had asked his guru, Sage Vashest, what is Maya? He did something very interesting thing. You know, he caught hold of a tree. Just hugged the tree and said, leave me, leave me, leave me. He said, what happened to my guruji? He said, this is what Maya is. You are holding on to the tree and telling the tree, leave me, leave me. We are holding on to the Maya. You don't want to get out of it. You want to experience a lot of things. So it's just like, another example that is given is, um, monkey, you know, monkey in India. What played? So the way they are trapped is, there are some, there's a small bottle. A jar is kept and some peanuts are kept inside the jar. So monkey ha- hand, he's able to put inside the jar. But then he makes a fist. And when he makes a fist, he cannot get his hand out of the jar and he's trapped. And that person comes and traps him. So Maya is like that only. You know, we have made that fist. All the monkey needs to do is release that fist and he's out. We are also like that. We are catching, grabbing that peanuts and we don't want to let go of that peanut. That peanut is Maya basically for us. Yes, Aparna ji.
Um, yeah, and there's one comment as well. Can I read it quickly? Sarunji, um, says even when people go to heavenly abode or demigods, uh, that's also Bhogiyoni. Here, Parab karma is hundred percent punya and so one just enjoy there without accumulating any karma.
That's true, very true. Now those are bhogiyonis. It's like, enjoy the meritorious deeds and that's all it is. Once you exhausted, get back. And getting back means you could even become an ant or a pig or whatever. That doesn't mean you'll at least become a human, nothing of that sort.
And Falguniji says, thank you for the good explanation.
Thanks for, thanks for thanking Falguniji.
Okay, Aparna ji, radha radha.
Radha radha. My question is about the internal and external motivation that we discussed. Um, so what about, um, I just had a question, like pleasing the parents and looking for inspiration from their praise. Um, that used to be like my whole world, you know, when my dad praised me, which was extremely rare to come by. Um, is that an external motivation or we can assume parents are our guru until we grow up and find our own guru in life?
Initially, it is for kids, I think it, it matters a lot, right? While we are growing up. But then we cannot be grown-up kids forever. Finally, we have to understand that we need to take control. Of our motivations as opposed to always leaving it in somebody's hands. You, you, you are not playing a. Horizontal game, you are playing a vertical game. Although God is seated within, I'm just saying it metaphorically. But a vertical game means you need a certificate from God, not from people around. Because people around may or may not be pleased and only person who can please everybody is the one who sells candies, okay? Otherwise, it's very difficult to please people. Somebody will find fault with you all the times. So when we de-link our motivation to what people are saying or doing, then we are doing ourselves a huge favor. Because if you don't do that, then what will happen is, you will become happy. But then the flip side is, you will become distressed when somebody criticizes you and that's not a good spot to be in, right? So in order for us to rise above both, we should be accountable to ourselves and to God. More than to people because somebody will say. More than to people because somebody will say something always.
Yeah, yeah, I think when we are young, we, we don't have that knowledge that, um.
Yeah, true.
Okay.
And then, uh, yeah, and then another aspect is our motivation when we tie it to people around it and that also becomes a mindset. It's very, it could be disturbing because you are always constantly seeking appreciation, avoiding criticism and stuff like that. There is a term in English, I think, it's called Allodoxophobia. Sabse bada rook kya kehenge char log, right? You are always worried about those four people, I don't know who those four people are, uh, maybe I'll show you their picture one of these days. You know what those people are and what do they do, but yeah, uh, it's, it's an, it's a zero sum game when you think about pleasing everybody around you, just not possible.
Thank you.
Nithinji, I had like a follow-up question on this, so can I, can our external motivation be. Divine, like in the divine realm, we eat guru, God, um.
To please them, yeah, it's a, it's a, again, that motivation you are tying to a better thing, right? Or a higher thing or a purifying thing. So yeah, I want to please God, I want to impress God, you know, guru, that is a good thing actually. But when we, when we do it for the world, then it becomes a little, but then there also, we should not become. A permanent kiddos there, right? Oh my God, my guru did not look at me or he, he, you know, chastised me, in fact. A good devotee would become overwhelmed when a guru reprimands them, not when a guru is praising them, right? So then there also we need to grow, but it's a good motivation to begin with, that I need to please them, I need to do my best in my seva. I said, it's a good one to go with, but then when something guru is not happy with you or he says something. To correct you, we should feel even more happier, oh my God, they are paying attention and they are working on me now, so that, that mindset needs to be there.
Uh, there are, there is a question from Pooja ji, um, how do these celestial gods function? Why do people keep fast on certain days to make these gods happy and work for them? And she has also given a comment on your, uh, remark of candy seller. That people find flaws in the, those who are selling candies too, by saying his candies are not tasty.
Yeah, that's true, there was a story, right, of, uh, uh, that story that Lord Shiva. Along with Parvati and Nandi, they came, came down on earth once, so Lord Shiva was riding Nandi. And then they were walking and then people came, you know, feminist organizations came, I think somebody from Miranda House also came, they said, you know, ladies walking and the gent is. Sitting on the, the fellow on, on the Nandi, how, how insensitive of him. And then the, they said alright, he made Parvati sit and he started walking. And then the other side of the people came, you know, look at this lady, her husband is walking. And she herself is happily sitting and, you know, going around with them, so then they finally both of them sat. And both of them sat, then people, then, you know, Menkhalgandhi, people, Peta, people came, you know, look at these people, they are insensitive to animals. Both of them are sitting and poor animal is carrying their weight. And then they, both of them got off, they said how, then people said, make, started making fun of them. Look at them, they have a nice ride and both of them are walking, you know, beside that animal. Then they, both of them picked Nandi on their head and started walking, then people started laughing even though they had a laugh, right? Look at these fools. You know, both of them are carrying, they have a, you know, Nandi going with them, instead of taking a ride, they are carrying them, so the point is, no matter what you do, people will find faults. So it's a very, uh, never-ending game trying to please everybody around, so that's how it usually goes, yes, Abhijit.
Her question, her question was regarding function of demigods.
Demigods, so demigods, we don't need to see, demigods, people go with demigods, people who want material wounds. And our scriptures say that people who get attracted towards the, the rosy, rosy parts of the Vedas, that is just a. Starting point for you to tame your senses. But the deeper meaning of our scriptures or Vedas is to develop love for God. But if you limit yourself to only seeking. Material wounds and stuff like that, of course there are Vides, if you do this and this demigod will be pleased and all, it's a never-ending game again, right? You are asking for more material world and it will take you further deep into this material world that, okay, there is happiness. And now I need to do this fast so that I can get this thing, it's a good starting point, just to have. A faith and a belief in an Almighty to begin with, but then the deeper meaning, it's a means to an end, and end is to develop love and devotion for God. Not limit yourself to demigods or, you know, seeking material wounds only. So, uh, we did one of the shlokas, maybe we can revisit that where it says that you don't. You know, focus on Devi Devitas Bhakti so much because it's for material bones. Instead, focus on developing love, love, love and devotion for God. That will actually be spiritually elevating and takes you closer to the goal of life, as opposed to taking you further, deeper into this material world.
Alright, Abhijit ji, Radha Radha.
Yes, Abhijit ji.
Uh, Radha Radha, uh, as you rightly mentioned that, uh, role of guru is very cardinal for self-realization and liberation. But my question is, how would you find a true guru? I mean to say, a seeker after spending considerable time, energy and attention. They realize that guru in question is having their own vested interest in running their own spiritual centers. So how would we, as a self-aware citizen, how do we know that we are going the right path or we are choosing the right guru? Uh, at the same time without being skeptical about them, so what is your opinion on this?
Sure, we, we have spoken about it already, but we'll revisit it again, in fact, in the concluding session, I'll talk about both. How do we go about finding a right guru? If you don't have a guru, what do we do? Uh, and then switching gurus and all that concept we'll talk about, but give you briefly, see, end of the day. God is seated within us, right? If you think about God, Isha Vasimidam, everything. God has permeated and he is seated within you as well, as well as Permatma, he knows your deepest desires. Now, if you are seeking guru for material wounds, hey, somebody I would find who can put his hand on my head. And bless me with this and that, then he will lead you to somebody, like who, who, who may give you that false promises. So there are certain symptoms of a true guru, that whether they will engage you materially or not, what kind of. Uh, things can happen basically, uh, you know, experience that you can have when you go to a person. Who is truly Shruti and Ramanish, which is a definition of a true guru, scripturally well-versed and practically realized. But we don't have a technology because a guru will not put a board in front of his house saying Golop return. You know, Brajuasi, this and that guru, we only have to find it out. And then God seated within you is knows your motivation behind seeking a guru and he'll lead you to the right person. So if you are sincerely seeking, you just have to be patient, he'll lead you, and it says when the disciple is ready, the master will appear, master has to appear. And, but we'll talk in more detail in a session, what are some of the things or yardsticks you could imply, uh, employ to find who's a true guru and who's not. And also, uh, you know, what do you do if you don't have a guru or is guru shift hopping fine? And, uh, how can we go about it if we need to? So we'll talk all about it, uh, it in our concluding session tomorrow. I hope I answered part of your question at least, Abhijit ji.
I am unable to, yeah, Abhijit.
Yeah, thank you, thank you so much.
Okay, and Rahul ji, Radha Radha.
Radha Radha, Nithinji, can we make some quick announcements? Sure, let's make those and then we can take Shilpa ji. Yeah, so the first announcement is for people who miss the Diwali Mahotsa. Do check out the social media handles of Radha Krishna Temple of Dallas and you will definitely find some mesmerizing glimpses of the events. Apart from that, Swami ji's India tour is starting from seventeen November, the link is already in the chat. So it will be a triple header weekend for people who are in Gurdhan and Delhi, so this weekend, so definitely. Uh, check that out and try to take advantage of that opportunity to meet him.
Like Tarunji also messaged, so to be specific, uh, in Delhi from six to eight P M. Um, on this Saturday, I suppose, uh, at Siri Fort Auditorium. There will be lectured by Swami ji, so people who are in or around do not miss out on this opportunity to meet him in person. So, yeah.
Yeah, once you click on that link, it will show you all the details, so. Please to check it out, you can plan it to meet him if you are in or around Delhi, Gurdhan area. It's a great opportunity to meet him in person and, and, uh.
And I know some people are already very, very excited to meet him, they have been meeting for very long.
Yep, that's very nice, great Rahul, any other announcements?
No, I think that's it, yeah.
And for Diwali, we actually wanted to show one of the glimpses, but after Shilpa ji.
Again, then we can show the glimpses and move to our next segment here.
Awesome, thank you Rahul ji and Shilpa ji, Radha Radha.
Uh, Radha Radha everyone, Radha Radha, Nithinji sir. Um, so I have a conundrum that I've been thinking about, uh, last week, we learned that. Uh, a guru is not always accessible to us. So, uh, just like guru and God, if I do something for my guru and God. How do I know that my guru and God liked it? And how can I use that as motivation to do that action again? I will just use something simple like, uh, like, so let's say I need, I made tea, uh, and offered it to my guru. How, and you know, I don't, I feel very shy to like ask my guru if my guru liked it or not. So I don't follow up with that. But how, same thing with God, you know, God and guru. So for any action, how would I know without asking, because I, I don't do that. That my God and guru liked whatever action I did, so how can I use that as motivation without knowing for sure? Because I don't always have access for a response to continue to do work, so that's, that's my question.
Pretty interesting question, are you a part of S M X, uh, Shilpa ji?
Am I part of what?
S M X, the S M X forum that we have where we meet Swami ji and can ask him questions, are you part of that?
Yeah, I, I'm a member, but honestly, I, it's kind of early and I haven't been able to join a whole lot.
To join one of these, I think it will, it will make up for a very good question, it will clarify a lot of questions for a lot of people around it. Having said that, I.
Okay.
About it, uh, it's a pretty profound question that, how do I know if my guru is happy with my right? You need a confirmation from him periodically, maybe participants can add more to that. But if your thoughts are pure around some activity, then that's essentially what gurus look like, right? To look at. Uh, if you have done it with not necessarily the taste part of it, the bhaas behind doing it.
Yeah, and I.
Yeah.
Okay, because I also heard one of Swami ji's, uh, lectures, how Maharaji once was given halwa by his, um. Yeah, with a lot of namak in it and he didn't say anything, I don't want to make a mistake like that.
See the, I get that, I get that part, see, if you think about guru, the definition of guru, right? They are, they are not people like us who will go with the taste, okay, they are already beyond taste, they eat food. Okay, sustain this body, they are beyond taste. So let's understand that part, it's not like us, oh my God, I enjoyed this, oh my God, I didn't enjoy it, I, they, for them, doesn't matter actually. Okay, so they are just doing it for the sustenance, so because they are at a much higher bliss, they don't need the sensory bliss to make up for something that they are missing already. For them, what matters is the bhaav, the sentiment that you are bringing in with, that is what matters to them. And if you have done it, you can, assured even if you make mistake, that's perfectly okay. Okay, and they are not like mistakes, we are going to call it, the sentiment that you are bringing to that particular act is what matters. And having said that, of course, you want to do the best, right, in whatever you do, and in that, accidentally some mistake happens, that is okay. You know, you still did it with the best of your intentions and the best of your ability, that is what they care for. But yes, that affirmation, if you hear, that's why I asked you go join S M X and ask this question, I think I would, I would love to hear his response around it.
Okay, I, yeah, I just feel like, everybody else, you know how you said like, the char people, I feel like. Those four people in the community are doing so much more, that my offering is so little. How can I ask for feedback? So yeah, I do get, I do get kind of like, I do wonder about what those people are doing for my guru.
It's not the quantity of the matter, it's the, you know, whatever you can, yatha samartha, right? They say that like when Lord Ram was building the bridge, even a squirrel was carrying pebbles. And that was very pleasing to Lord Ram. She was also pulling in her weight as to the best of her ability, so she wouldn't say that, okay, oh my God, I can't lift those heavy rocks like these. Monkeys, big monkeys are able to do, I can only do this. She did whatever she could at that point in time and then with God and guru's grace, they can enable you with, you know, more skills and things. And whatever seva they have to take you, they'll take from you, you do the best that you can do in your current position, situation that you are in, without worrying or overanalyzing this whole thing. Yes, Sunday, you wanted to add something?
Yes, I had, uh, like this question is very relatable, right? So I had also asked this once to Swami ji, I remember, uh, during family camp or something. And it was little different, but, uh, what I had asked, how do we know that from our actions? Uh, guru is pleased, uh, and so what he had said is. If you align to the values and the philosophy that the guru is teaching. Then he will always be pleased, so what we need to keep in our mind, how well from our action and most importantly, as Nithinji said with our intent. We are aligning to what we have been learning from our guru and if we are trying our best to do that, then. There is no doubt, the guru and Hari will not be pleased.
True, Shilpa ji too, simply said, if we are aligning to their teachings, there cannot be anything more pleasing to guru than that. Right, so that you can be rest assured they are pleased, if you are making. Generally trying to make a difference in your life, you are trying to work on yourself, you are trying to align to their teachings, you improve yourself. It is the most heartening thing for a guru, because that is their purpose, right? That is why they have been teaching this knowledge to us. You can be rest assured, there is no, no reason for you to believe that they will not be pleased with you, that's how it goes.
Thank you so much, and I'll close my question at the S M X, thank you so much.
Good, and that's a pretty good forum for us to, you know, get questions answered, so, great.
And there was, there was this line that I wanted to share that I came across, can I quickly say that? And then there is. So much, there is also a question from Pooja ji. Okay, so the lines that I wanted to say was this. I just loved it and maybe you would like to translate it, Nithinji?
We keep, keep dirting our, dirting our, in, antakaran, what is the mind and intellect?
Yeah, so basically we engage our senses, mind in the material realm.
What is Dhobi called in English? Dhobi guy, yeah, so basically, uh, what we do is, we, we are, we are working overtime to keep dirting our mind and intellect and then. Guru is doing the job of that laundry man, he keeps on cleaning it, right? And we keep on dirting and keeps on cleaning, so this is how the process continues, yeah.
So how much of hard work guru does on each one of us?
True.
Yeah, okay, and Pooja ji's question is, it's a little long, but I won't rephrase, I'll just read it like that, okay? Uh, on, uh, on the same grounds as Shilpa ji's question, when you get teary-eyed while remembering God or while singing devotional songs. Thanking him for everything or while feeling low and you think of God. Does it mean that he is around you or next to you or is it your hormones playing with your mind? Yeah, that's the question.
So yeah, please fill out the feedback tracker if you have more questions, so yeah, these things, uh. Uh, we don't see, it said that, um. You feel teary, that's fine, whether it's your hormones playing or what, you don't worry about it. Go with the flow, very few people get an opportunity to shed tears for God, right? If you, if you can, for whatever reason, you are one of the privileged ones. It's like you have that nuclear weapon with you, which melts God just like that. Do that, that is fine, perfectly okay, because what happens is when your soul comes in touch with. You know, there is a little bit of trace of that divine thing, your soul says, oh my God, I have never experienced something like this in my material world. That love that I've experienced, not even from my parents or anybody who has claimed to love me so far in my life. So that feeling will be so strong that tears will be a natural consequence of it, having said that. The tears also are of different types, right? Now, Todd is better than Tom in this case, okay, the tears of divine love. That tears of misery, now if something bad is happening in our life. You know, we are feeling bad about something, the tears will automatically come as soon as we go in front of God, so there are different qualities, we don't know. We don't have to get into that, tears are coming, that's good enough, but the day, the tears quality is truly for the sake of God, when it happens. That day. Krishna will himself come and wipe off your tear, okay? So, we have to wait for that day. One day, it says that Maharajee said that, don't take, uh, you know, don't think you're, uh. You know, because you are able to shed tears, now they are, that the quality of tear has reached its pinnacle. The day it will reach the pinnacle. That shedding it for the divine love of God. God will have to manifest himself and he'll wipe off your tears in front of you. That's what it's meant to be. But it's good. If you fed, feel tears, you, I said that you all sisters are blessed in that sense. I don't know how do you manage to pull out tears at the drop of a hat, but it's very good. Okay, uh, so just put on that, that's a good thing to be able to shed tears in front of God. Come to one of our retreats, okay? That will be very nice. There are people who sit in a line and just cry. I used to wonder how do they cry, but I, I can understand now, I can appreciate it now.
Yes, this reflects upon your purity. It will be very inspiring.
And there is nothing more purifying than shedding those tears. In fact, it cleanses you very quickly. Okay, so it's a good thing. Don't feel embarrassed about it. It's a good thing to cry for God. We keep on shed, it is said that the amount of tears we have shed for this world. Just listen to the statement, okay? This is an atomic statement. Maharajee said that the amount of tears we have shed for this world across our lifetimes. If we had shed even one percent of those tears for God, we would have realized God not once, but multiple times. Okay, that much tears we have already shed for the world around us. One percent is good enough for you to realize God multiple times, so. It's very powerful, so keep it up.
Hard hitting though.
Possible, please share some tears with us as well, okay? Give us the technology. Nice. Thank you, Pooja ji. Hope Arya is doing good. Always good to see you and thank you for turning on your video always, wherever you join.
Awesome. Can I share this, uh, quickly?
Yeah. You can share it only so fast, right?
No, okay, yeah, that's right. Okay, so I'll start playing it.
Very nice. That was a good one. So, if you saw that, we lit so many diyas, I don't know the exact count. But it was a wonderful, wonderful ambience that we had and, uh, we just lit up that light, you know, the entire temple. So, hope you enjoyed that online. If, if not in person, I was one of the fortunate ones to be able to attend Swamiji's lecture. And witness that spectacle, you know, of so many diyas and different types of diyas and different colors of diyas and different.
Just to add, we also have a very, like, we have many, many videos of, uh, the Diwali Mahotsav that just concluded today. Uh, we had Gaurdhan Puja celebrations today, so check that out on the social media. You will also get to see. The video in which our special volunteers were prepping up for these diyas. So, that is also very, uh, nice video. You might see some familiar faces. So, do check that out on the Instagram as well as Facebook pages. All right, so that being said, should we go to?
Yes, move to our devotional segment. Please fill out the feedback tracker. If not already, we can have a quick five-minute devotional segment and then we'll wrap it up for tomorrow.
Oh, scoreboard?
Not today.
No, yeah, let's do that, uh, on Wednesday.
Yeah, let's do it on Wednesday, but we can move to devotional segment. Anybody who wants to sing, maybe we can take a couple, couple of hands today. Sorry, Samya. Go ahead, Samya.
First, maybe Rahulji, then maybe I can.
Thank you.
Yes, Rahulji, Radhe Radhe.
Radhe Radhe, yeah, just two lines. Radhe Radhe Govind. Govind Radhe, Radhe Radhe Govind. Govind Radhe Gur. Te hi Hari Jnana Govind Radhe. Guru Benu Kakhagah Jnana Bata Radhe. Radhe Radhe Govind, Govind Radhe. Radhe Radhe Govind. Govind Radhe. Radhe Radhe, very nice Guru Bina Jnana Impossible. Very nice, beautiful bhajan, thank you. Very relevant lines. Go ahead, Samya.
Okay, this is a picture that I got today itself. And it suits this bhajan because it has Girdhari as well as Guru. So, I'll just, uh, sing this. Okay. Pratham Na Man. Guru Var. Puni Giri Thar. Pratham Na Man. Guru Var. Puni Giri Thar. Joy Sri Guru Var. Soi Sri Giri Thar. Pratham Na Man. Guru Var. Supuni Giri Thar. Hari Guru Kripa. Sadha Sabhi Par. Patra Paavaan Kar. Pratham Na Man. Guru Var. Puni Giri Thar. Karu Kripalu. Kripa. Par. Tan Man Thar. Arpan Charan. Par. Pratham Na Man. Guru Var. Puni Giri Thar. Pratham Na Man. Guru Var. Puni Giri Thar. Guru Govinda. Guru Govinda. Govinda. Guru Govinda. Guru Govinda. Pratham Na Man. Guru Var. Puni Giri Thar. Yeah, done.
Radhe Radhe, beautiful bhajan, Samya. First, we pay obeisance to our guru and then God, very nicely sung and it's a beautiful bhajan. Yes, Sai Ram ji, you want to sing as well?
Radhe Radhe, Sai Ram ji.
Uh, Radhe Radhe. Yeah, yeah, I have one, um, two, two dohas actually from Kabir ji. So, I'll sing back. Bura Jodhe Kan Me Chala. Pura Na Milia Koi. Pura Jodhe Kan Me Chala. Pura Na Milia Koi. Dil Ko Khooja Apna. Muj Se Bura Na Koi Kabira. Muj Se Bura Na Koi. Guru Do Bishish Kapda. Saabun Sir Jan Haar. Guru Do Bishish Kapda. Saabun Sir Jan Haar. Surati Sila Par Dhoye. Nikse Nikse Jyoti Apar Kabira. Nikse Jyoti Apar. Radhe Radhe.
Radhe Radhe, thank you, Sai Ram ji. Pulav, so many Kabir dohas these days, very, very nice.
And this, this second one was the same thing basically, dhobi rule, amazing. Thank you, Sai Ram ji.
Thank you so much. Beautiful Sai Ram ji. Sudhakar ji, you want to say as well?
Yes, Radhe Radhe, Sudhakar ji.
Radhe Radhe, can I sing? I, I did not give you my name earlier, is it okay?
Yeah, just limited to two minutes and that will be fine.
Okay. This is a small bhajan related to the Lord Ram, okay? This goes like this. Khatte Bhi Ram Kaho, Pite Bhi Ram Kaho. Khatte Bhi Ram Kaho, Pite Bhi Ram Kaho. Soote Bhi Ram Kaho, Ram Ram Ram. Soote Bhi Ram Kaho, Ram Ram Ram. Bol Ram 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 Ram. Padte Bhi Ram Kaho, Likhte Bhi Ram Kaho. Padte Bhi Ram Kaho, Likhte Bhi Ram Kaho. Sunte Bhi Ram Kaho, Ram Ram Ram. Sunte Bhi Ram Kaho, Ram Ram Ram. Bol Ram 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 Ram. Keltay Bhi Ram Kaho, Jitay Bhi Ram Kaho. Keltay Bhi Ram Kaho, Jitay Bhi Ram Kaho. Hartay Bhi Ram Kaho, Ram Ram Ram. Hartay Bhi Ram Kaho, Ram Ram Ram. Bol Ram 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 Ram. Haste Bhi Ram Kaho, Rothe Bhi Ram Kaho. Haste Bhi Ram Kaho, Rothe Bhi Ram Kaho. Marthe Bhi Ram Kaho, Ram Ram Ram. Marthe Bhi Ram Kaho, Ram Ram Ram.